I'd like to start putting in here a thing about, uh, correspondence. Something like so much that if I get letters from somebody that I want to read,
Outside.
Yeah, brother.
No.
My guys, buddy.
I've been working myself silly out here all trying to get that right. It's like real quiet.
This is a good time to listen to music, but...
Gary, you wanna go ahead?
Uh... This is, uh, March fourteenth, six thirty town hall meeting. Uh... Calling it to order.
It's six thirty-three.
And need to go golf.
Linda Johnson, here.
Thank you, Hannah, Eric.
Can I just marry here?
You're all the answers.
I'm calling you there.
Right, say the pleasure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, don't look at the table that way, son. Thanks. Christina, under that, there are magazines that come out for the state of this week. They have names on it. And the back is on. That one's on. I see. A little bit of that.
We can handle it, we can handle it.
Oh, is this for your show?
That's for you to have for your show.
Oh, thank you. It's a little moist. Sorry about that.
Why don't that be?
I don't know, it's just all wet on top. I didn't do it. Is this something we have to go on or just something we eat? It's just a magazine. It comes out every month and gives us information.
I can't hear you back here. Well, speak up, the board meeting started.
I ask what this was. It is, uh, just a magazine that we get, has our names on it, just up-to-date stuff from the state of Illinois, I guess.
Minutes will eat you.
Yes. Um... I'll read this again, public comments. Any person not a member of village board may address village board with regard to items of per- p- proposed business. Please rise if not physically impaired and state his or her name for the record and limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the village board, not to any member thereof. No person other than the board member recognizing the individual addressing the board and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion directly or through a member of the board without the permission of the mayor. Any person making personal or impertinent remarks or who shall become disruptive addressing the village board shall be forthwith evicted from the board room by the mayor. Hmm. Alright. So are we having public comments now or later?
Uh, do you come for the floor? On that gent of air, that's where you have to do this.
The floor is open to the public.
Any comments?
Public?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. Got a timer where I can see it? If I can keep track of my five minutes? Cause you guys lying, you shut down the floor on me last time.
John, it's right here.
I can't see it from here. Y'all need a bigger clock.
You want me to hold it?
Nope.
You put it right.
Alright. What was that?
Go ahead and state your date.
You don't mouth me off up there, Tyron. I'm the public.
I'll ask you to leave.
No, you won't, and I won't leave.
Yeah, I will.
I won't leave though. I won't, but you ain't gonna make no smart-ass remarks to me.
John, can you state your date?
I haven't made nothing, do you?
Yeah, you did. Let's play it back. Alright, my name's John King. You got five minutes. One. Last board meeting I was at, yeah, home bag, old paper. We said Damon was on the tractor. The superintendent over the public works said he went down there on the tractor or nothing like that. He's gonna show you some pictures, say otherwise. So next time you call me a liar to my face, Stacy, better make sure you have the facts in front of you.
Yeah, I believe he was working on that.
It don't matter, it's still down at his house. And I got other pictures where he scraped it, so keep calling me a liar. Number two, the village lawnmower is over at Burberry's house being fixed, was it not? Does he have a tax number or anything that the town can show that he has an optional business and insurance on that? In case something happens? Them were five and ten thousand dollar tractors, or lawnmowers, I should say. Cause I will for you, and I will find out, and if he doesn't, then he shouldn't be working on it. Or is it under the table and you paid him cash? Three, Claudia, do you have an FYI certificate from the state? Have you took your classes yet?
No, they're not available.
Okay, thank you. And more than one people can take those too. Um, number four, I asked Christina to see the, uh, see the cameras, Linda told her that'd be a quorum. She has no clue what she's talking about, the open meetings act at all. She don't know what the system. And actually messaging on each other's phones and private messages is a quorum. And no matter if it's here or out there, when you're sending messages back and forth, that's a quorum, and you can't do that. Harassment, Linda, I asked you why you had a key. You said it's all the harassment. Why don't I show you them papers from the judge again and see who's really harassing who? Why do you have a key? I couldn't get a key, he took my key away. Why she have a key now when she said she didn't need one or want one? Or is that just a personal grudge? Also, you had a closed meeting last time. Damon had a camera around his neck, he was back there for ten minutes during a closed meeting, it's supposed to be confidential. Why do you have a camera around his neck in a closed meeting for ten minutes?
It was turned off.
And you shouldn't have one back there. I'm not gonna, I understand, but shouldn't have one back there. And, uh, another thing, I heard a cat drowned too. So, where'd the cat drown at? Cause the public orders didn't do their job? Or is the supervisor out checking on that?
Drowned, watered down?
Yeah. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Bill Evelyn. Claudia?
Yes.
I'm gonna address you to this. Can you write in the minutes? I don't like you assuming something. You write what's on the board. You said, "I beg for my innocence" last meeting. You need to pay attention to what's happened to the board. You guys, yeah, right here. You guys need to read them, cause I'll tell you what, you write something about me, that ain't right. I will see you in court, I swear to God I will see you in court. One of, one of, one of... I sure will. You need to be, the board needs to read these minutes before you approve them. Claudia, you pay attention to what's going in here. You don't need to pay attention to what's going on in the audience. You, you wrote this for how you feel about me, "I beg for my innocence." Bullshit.
You actually did that though, didn't you?
No, no. No, I didn't. You better be, they ain't going sure before you put it on paper. And for you board members to pass the minutes.
I'd like to have read back to us.
Yeah, well, and also something else. I wanna know who it was left my water meters off, the bases off at my shop. I got pictures of them, and somebody's house cat fell in and drowned. They took not just the top off, they took the housing off. I got pictures of them, here, here. Left them on. Them meters-
Private property.
Now, them meters in Belmont are the only meters in Belmont are on private property.
What's the address?
My shop.
What is shop?
My shop. Them meters are on private property.
Is this the place where you park your trucks? Is that where you calling your truck?
Yeah, they are private property, only two meters, only this one, I don't know why they, I don't know why they took them off, they just left them. A gray cat fell in and drowned. That ain't right. That ain't right. Who, uh, who's in charge of the, what? Who's in charge of the workers?
All of us.
I am, Bill.
Who's the supervisor of the workers?
Gary.
And you, your name's on that paper at his time.
Yeah, and I, and I told, and I called up here, and I, the day I found the meters off, I called, I said, "There's meters, the covers are off, not the..." I mean, they could flip them over completely. That's wrong. Let's give them a raise. We got a blade out back busted, have you guys know about that? Stacy, you know about that?
It was busted.
Yeah, it's busted.
It was busted last year, Bill.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't busted either last year.
It's been bent, yes.
No, it wasn't, that's a fresh bust, I got pictures of it, got pictures of it, I got pictures of it. I know a fresh bust, I've been around before. They rust. What we gonna do about that? Well, well, that's- What we gonna do about it?
I don't know what we're gonna do about it, Bill.
We can't let somebody tear up stuff. And rumors is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what a rumor is. The city employees is giving gas away.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that's a rumor. I got talks of handing this to make things accountable. It's a meter that goes on your gas tanks. Your gas deal. Make, when I was on the board, we had a clipboard, every gallon was accounted for. I don't know what happened to it.
You didn't hear that is, do we still have a clipboard for that?
Do what? Is there, is there, is there, is every gallon out of there, is it wrote down? No, it ain't. It was when I was on the board. Every gallon was wrote down and what went into. I know this probably fell on deaf ears, but that's my money they're spending. My tax dollars. I went to FS, Wallach Valley, they said, "That goes on your meters, you can..." But it don't do good to have, and we got one on our Dees or gas, but nobody's writing them down what they're putting them in, you understand what I'm saying?
We have this on about there?
You got, you got the meter on the gas, but not on the Diesel. But it don't matter, nobody's writing them down.
Yeah, you gotta write them down.
No, you gotta write them down.
Keep a log.
What it goes into.
Keep a log.
I mean, that's just good business. I mean, it is. And the rumors is around town that you giving it away. With five gallon cans. That's just rumor. I don't put turn off. I hope it ain't.
Did anybody get pictures of that?
No, I just heard rumors. I thought, I mean, I don't know, I just heard rumors, you know how rumors are. That would stop that. Thank you, I'm done. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Want this back, Bill?
No, you guys can order them, you get, order them online.
Speak, speak, you guys will speak.
My name's Laura Harrell, and I've only lived here a very short amount of time, a little over a year. But I've heard a lot of different things about this little town that I live in. And I like this little town. I tend to get along with everybody, pretty much. But I'll say this. I think everybody has made credible points, but I don't think anybody's looking for solutions. If everybody would work together and stop being so combative, I think that would really make things better. And I don't just believe the board needs to be courteous and respectful, I believe we do too. Thank you.
Laura, how do you spell your last name?
H-A-R-R-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Anybody else could talk? I will if nobody else is.
Restart the timer, Gary.
Okay, I have it.
Dave King?
Okay.
First off, here's some white. Can anybody tell me what that is? I can.
I don't know what it is, take it off the table.
Where did it come from?
That's chlorine, if that's in your water you drink.
Okay, take it off the table, please.
Hey, I'm talking.
Take, take that off.
That's chlorine, we drink that, do you drink it? That's chlorine, it comes out of your water.
Wait a minute, you said something about being nice.
That's ten gallons of water right there. You put that in your body, it's like a shallow.
They know burnt bridges.
When was the last time there was lines flushed? See that? A whole full.
How did you get that?
Then I'd like to know something else. How'd we hire the old town worker? Is Chris still working for us, mayor?
No. He quit.
He quit, okay, did he turn in a resignation?
I didn't get one from him, no, he just quit.
Okay, the old tou, the old workers, what I'm talking about, the one that worked town before?
Go right past.
Is he working for the town now?
Yes.
Okay, how did he start working for, well, are we paying him right now? Are we paying him?
Yeah, I believe we are, yeah.
Okay, then where was the meeting at for that?
For the expenditures.
You're supposed to have a meeting. Or don't you know how to run the board? You're supposed to have a meeting, three of you just get together in a board meeting or whatever for that, and you go to the back and vote on it. You just don't know how to run nothing. And you're paying this man already for a whole month? I've seen him carrying stuff in and out of here, putting it in his car.
Got video of it.
You cannot be paying him until you vote him in.
Yep.
Where's your meeting at?
You don't have to vote him in.
Yes, you do!
I don't have any, I don't have to have permission to hire somebody.
Better read your rules again.
You're wrong. In the book.
Where's the application at?
Oh, when you can hire, it's extreme emergency, Gary. Extreme emergency. Only.
How was that extreme emergency when you already had a worker?
I was on the board six years, I know that.
But you're supposed to have a meeting and vote on how much you're gonna pay him. You can hire if you want, mayor, but you're still gotta have a meeting of three people in here in a board meeting. Special meeting. And if you're paying him, you can't be paying. That's against the laws. You know why it's against the law? Here's the Belmont Codebook. All you have to do, people, is open it up and read it. Belmont Codebook, right here. Don't you know how to read, mayor? You're supposed to have that meeting before you pay him.
No, he threw that in court up on the witness stand. No, he can't read.
Ain't you, mayor? You just said you're paying him right already.
You can't hire, Gary, you cannot hire.
You can appoint, but you can't hire.
You cannot hire. Extreme emergency only.
Hey, mayor, you think you can go around just hire anybody you want, put it up here? Where's the applications at?
You can go up to charity. The rest of the public ain't getting no opportunity for an application either.
I guess we just do what we want, cause it's a little town. Have you just went through this yet? Anybody has looked at this? These places around here? Nobody's called the sheriff and had them write a ticket or nothing else to clean it up? Down here, we got sidewalk covered on that one, you can't even see the yield sign down there.
Maybe just tell them to clean their sidewalk off in text messages.
You know, I had to clean mine up, Bill had to clean his house up, and after that, it got dropped.
Who did call them? Trash company, today early to come pick that up, I wonder?
Nobody wants to say anything now about it. But I'd like to know how we're paying the town worker.
Without a boat.
Without boats.
With expenditures.
You know, that's why we got town board meetings. And on another subject, I wonder, how do we pay for the tractor and the golf cart? Batteries. Did, you know, you tore the tractor up, that was put on hold. Anything put on hold, you're supposed to have a meeting to discuss it.
Vote for expenditures.
Golf cart's put on hold. Don't you know how to run the meeting, mayor?
Not according to you, I don't.
No.
What was that?
No, that's according to the open meetings act and every other book you have in front of you on your desk.
What'd you say, Linda? I can't hear you. Cause around here, when you're talking to him, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
You can't whisper, Linda. You can't do that.
I'm not whispering.
Well, you trying to talk to the mayor?
Yep, anything you say up there on the table, the whole public has to hear.
Whole public has to hear.
Read your open meetings act.
You know, we got rules and regulations in this town, but you just only wanna pick on a couple few. It's when yours get cornered.
You're gonna make us, gonna drag us out that door if we don't do something right, and you're doing, you hired somebody, you couldn't even hire. That's wrong. You gonna either play by the rules or we're not gonna play by the rules, Gary, you don't know shit.
And another thing, Claudia, the last meeting, she's supposed to write the minutes. Public comments, no. She didn't even state her name, be put on a clock or anything. You said the floor was closed, and she went up and spoke twice.
Yeah, I didn't, I gave my whole five minutes.
You shut this man down, but you let her talk.
Then he wanted to talk about public comments throwing people out.
I think I need to lie out tonight.
How, how you work out, mayor? You sit here and read stuff off to it, but the board here can't even do that. Cause you closed the meeting and she got to talk.
Either we're playing by the-
Just like this road down here, the alley, you groveled in for a ride.
You're gonna escort me out, but you can hire a man you can't hire.
You groveled all that, what about that alley down here at the end?
I only gave my five minutes and wanted to escort.
Well, don't you know what the town workers doing?
No, they drowned a cat.
Drowned a cat? Who, who, who's, who's responsible for that?
Can I remind you all?
No, because you don't run the floor.
No.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I know, nothing. You, you don't run the floor. You don't run the floor.
So you're on the floor, the mayor runs the meeting.
Mayor runs the meeting.
The mayor runs the meeting. The mayor runs the meeting.
Mayor runs the meeting.
The mayor runs the meeting.
You better read your open meetings act real fast.
And you can ask them to leave.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, but you can hire somebody. You breaking the rules there.
Well, why not?
Yes, you are.
Open meetings act, you better read it.
Hard worker, no applications, paying him, mayor just said you were paying.
Yeah, it's been up for a while.
I wanna know how you fixed the tractor and that one that's put on hold in the meeting. And the golf cart. Did we buy batteries for it?
No, we didn't, Dave.
Well, okay, where'd we get the batteries at?
The batteries are the ones that was in it.
Alright. What about the tractor?
That was weird, cause they were shot when I was on the board, we had to order new ones. Weird.
When you put stuff on hold, you gotta discuss it. Just like the tractor. Or was it because you tore the tractor up and didn't want to bring it before the board and have to pay for some of it?
On your own property.
You can go ahead and close the floor, mayor.
You can, mayor, but there's still other people might be wanting to talk before you close that floor.
No, that's right.
So you might wanna keep giving him bad advice.
You wanna ask?
You whispering again, Linda, I can't hear you.
I'm not whispering.
Well, I can't hear you.
I can't help it, you're hard to hear.
You're supposed to be talking to us.
I can't hear you back here, I'm not hard to hear.
I can hear you just fine, Linda.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Can we go ahead with the meeting or?
And here's a bucket of coats, you guys better have one in front of you. You got one?
Got one right here.
Got yours? Alright, maybe the, rest of the town board members are gonna read it.
He cannot hire that employee, and you guys are gonna let their luck happen.
So guys, we're not letting anything happen, I have my book open, I have to read up on it before we can go forward, and Yelling's not gonna fix anything, so it's time to calm down. If anybody else has comments, now is the time.
That, yeah, that, that application has to be posted. There was no application posted, nothing.
Dave King, I'm done.
Thank you.
Can I have a piece of your paper to bookmark this page for future reference?
Anybody else like to speak on anything?
What, Linda? Can't hear you back here again.
She asked for a piece of paper and I'm sharing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have comments, Peggy?
No, I don't.
I don't think you can address somebody, they think only the mayor can.
Well, yeah, read up on your open meetings act.
That's right.
That's right, thank you.
I need approval of the past meetings.
Are you closing the floor?
Yes. Floor is closed, thanks, everybody.
I feel that look like statements, and they're very incorrect. And it's not my responsibility to correct them. You know, like, cause they're someone's opinion, what they thought, and they may misunderstood, but that's what they thought, and that's what it is. And so I do not approve of what they have to say. And so I want to read the minutes. And when I have an opportunity to talk about finances, I'll, I'll go into it a little more in depth.
Claudia, is your battery dying? Is it plugged in?
It's plugged in, is that thing turned off?
Um...
Is that on, the power switch?
Um, sure it is, yeah.
It made a dying noise on here. Is it charging?
Yeah.
It looks like everything's okay.
It's still recording. I heard it too.
It might have been phone one of them.
Maybe.
So the minutes. Uh, before the mayor asks us for approval of the bills, um, I wanna point out to us that we do just have the, um, summary of the bills to be paid, we don't have the actual bills in front of us this evening. There was a death in the family, and she was unable to get that to us. We will be able to see it at the next meeting, but this is the summary that we'll be paying at this time. Um, I wanna point out that last month, we had a bill from First Insurance Agency for, um, a hundred and fifty dollars, you guys want to take a look at it, my notes underneath it there. Um, we- We heard, I called them to say, what is this, and it's a bonded insurance. That they took out back in. Uh, what's my date on my page? Let me read this page. It was taken out in the. By Mr. Bowman, a long time ago. And it's just fifteen thousand a piece for the mayor and the. Treasurer. It was taken out before IML offered bonded insurance. And our bonded insurance covers fifty thousand for the mayor clerk and the treasurer. So it's a policy that we really no longer need, and we just haven't. Noticed it before that we were paying a hundred and fifty dollars extra a year. For this thirty thousand dollars bonded insurance. We did pass it last month, the check has not been cashed and will not be cashed until May, cause that's when it goes in effect. And so I wanted to present it to the board to ask if you wanna continue to have this. Insurance. Or not.
What does this cover?
Um, it's.
Like, what about the mayor, what about the treasurer?
If, if there was a financial mistake.
And we have that covered in other places?
Our, our IML insurance covers fifty thousand a piece on all three of those positions. So, and this one here is only thirty thousand, fifteen thousand a piece, and we're just carrying it. And like I said, it was offered before IML offered Iinsure, the IML insurance.
And where are we paying yearly, a hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh huh, extra, to this one policy. And I called IML, and when I called first, they were like, yeah, you don't really need that other one, but if you guys wanna keep it, that's fine, but if you don't let us know. They're not going to do anything with the check until May, they won't reinstate it. It's not due to be reinstated. I looked it up and we paid it last year in March. So.
And our other coverage covers, did you say fifty thousand?
Per, per person, uh, of those positions. The clerk. The mayor. And the treasurer.
Realistically, how many times have we made a fifty thousand dollar mistake? Ever, like, anything close to that?
No, I don't believe so, but that is, that is what it is, and so this would only be fifteen, and this is a shared thirty thousand, so.
I see that paper.
And this is what I made the phone call the day after the meeting, I'm like. Why do we have this and what is it for, and this is what I found on that. So, because we did vote on it last month to pay it, I need to know if you guys do want. To be paid or not. There's also, we talked about the. Bill from. Frontier. They originally was charging us five hundred eighty-four dollars, and I had mentioned. When we got this bill that I was looking into it, and so I did, um, get that reduced to three hundred and fifty dollars.
Per month?
No, it's a one-time bill from where that line was pulled, not disconnected, but pulled out of the ground and they came back and reburied it. And so, that's the bill for it, it's three hundred and fifty. But I just wanna bring that to your attention, that we were able to get that reduced.
Equipment retail is on here?
That's part of our IML insurance, uh huh. Our IML insurance calls, um. You know, like, when the doors got, got messed up, someone hot glued the doors. We could put that in.
What?
I don't know if they hot glued them or, but they glued them shut, they were locked, they glued shut, super glue, yeah.
These doors?
Yeah, our exterior doors, all doors were glued shut some time ago, and we had to replace them again. Now that's a small expense, so we didn't put that in. But any kind of vandalism, we can, we can put, you know, turn that in and so forth.
So if you vandalism the park?
Yeah, vandalism the park can be turned in.
You got a right to ask for copies on that if you want copies.
That trash can, so.
That what you have in your files.
Thank you.
And this is the one that went, went, just as a copy of what was last month. That's, that's just my personal note I wrote. And that I wrote down here sabotage vandalism attorney fee. Any of those things can be covered. Court fees, reimbursement can be also paid by IML. You just have to wait like any other insurance. Good job. We'll go ahead and, uh, this is just a copy of it, the official of this is in the office. I just had this out to present before this evening. That was an email. And she did put that on the bills being paid here, that three fifty. So note that was down from the five eighty-four.
Is it three fifty or three hundred?
Um, three hundred and fifty dollars even.
Okay, I won't throw them now down.
Um, down from five hundred eighty-four thirteen.
It says three fifty on the, on here?
Yeah, it's.
You speak up a little louder please, I can't hear you back here.
We're just clarifying the amount of the bill from.
I know, but I can't hear you back here.
It's been reduced from five hundred eighty-four dollars to three hundred and fifty.
I wanted to point out to you all too, that that Watman bill is still really outrageous, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars for last month. We are in the process of, of. Training Damon Sloss to do the, be a water clerk and actually start. Doing those water bills, presenting those on, on the computer. And then, um.
Doing the paper.
He'll do the labor of actually folding, right now I've been doing it for. Since Shawna quit, I've been doing all the secretary on paperwork. And, uh, of course I'm not gonna fight. But, uh, that is something that, um, I looked into and he can be a water clerk and, um. It went really well, the training of it last month, of him doing that. And, um, she charges approximately seven hours to do the water bills. So, and that's just printing the bills, I still spend the, you know, four or five hours folding and mailing.
So for. That job is normally the secretary?
Treasurer, yeah.
Treasurer, and we don't have that, and we have put in the effort as in putting the stuff on the sign out there, right, what else have we done to get one?
A treasurer. And we did hire one, that one, and she didn't stay with us. And, yeah, we have.
Is that on a official page on Facebook, or is that on public sites, or?
I don't know. They don't tell the public.
I know, I have to be on public site, not on a public site.
It's one of those, the lifestyle train thing.
Gotcha.
Local one.
Let me see if there's anything else I needed to talk about on the bills.
Is there a reason that we can't ask or run an ad with like a news, like the news sequel, like WSJD or something?
Yeah, we can.
Because ultimately, that's probably gonna save us money if we're paying that much money per month.
No, we have.
WSJD is expensive, um.
Are they eight hundred and thirty-six dollars a month expensive?
And see, and her original estimate was between four and five hundred dollars. And we've never met that once. Um, we do have the public calling her opposed to calling city hall. And that, that kinda, she, she books hours. Uh, she's, she's good to us cause she picks up the mail. You know, she does check it regularly in the box regularly as, as she can. And that's courtesy because she lives out in the city.
Can't hardly hear you Linda.
Well, I couldn't hear what she was saying before, cause you guys talk all the time.
I wasn't talking. I saw you guys.
It's not y'all's fault.
I can't hear though.
Did you say she's, they're charging extra because people and.
If they get five minutes, I get five minutes, she talks out on the floor, I'm talking too.
Who are they talking about, Peggy?
Watlers.
Who?
I think Watlers.
Can we open the floor to the public so that they can ask questions?
No.
We're not able to?
Well, if she talks, I get five minutes then. You didn't close the floor on her. She had her five up in her city. That's how old means where it's coming from.
So did you.
I know, but if she talks, no, you hush. You're not the one that has the talking words put against you, and your gun rights taken away and everything else. They broke the bridge of me. No, I'm here. If other people can talk out of turn, so can I.
You said you can't hear me. I was just trying to clarify what she said.
You were asking questions to her though, you weren't clarifying.
We couldn't hear, cause you were talking.
You were talking to you though.
Turn that camera off for me, you don't have permission to film me.
It's public, yes, you can do it as public, you're in a public space, you have no F C privacy in public.
Public meeting.
I can ask you to turn it off for me.
Okay.
Ask the mayor, just told.
I don't have to.
Thank you for turning it off.
Don't tell me to turn it, now you don't have authority. You don't.
John King, do not be disrespectful to me.
I'm not, I'm telling you, you don't have the authority, that's not disrespectful, stand up for my rights.
You're not the mayor either.
Exactly.
At this table.
The mayor runs the floor.
You have the control over me at that table.
I do, John.
No, you don't, show me in the policy book or anywhere else. Go ask, go ask the judge if the mayor did.
I have the ability to ask you to.
No, you don't, no, you don't. Go ahead and try and see if you do. Just like last time you called the cops on me. Just like the last time you called the cops on me, what?
Enough.
Thank you mayor.
Thank you.
Linda tries to run the board.
I know it, they ain't running me.
Babe.
Hi mayor.
Howdy. Need approval of. A motion to approve the bills.
I make a motion.
Financial report. Need a second.
My second.
A motion's been made by Stacy and approved by her. Seconded by Linda to approve the bills as distributed, the draft form of the bills. Now I have a question, do you wanna take action now on whether or not to. Keep the. Insurance, the one hundred and fifty dollar. Uh, premium for the bond insurance, or do you wanna wait until later to table that? I'd like to table that too.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda to vote on it on, on next meeting, like I said, it's not due till May, it won't be reinstated until May.
Can we also add advertising for the secretary to the next agenda?
Well, that can just be decided if we die.
Can it, so it's money, and we have to vote on it?
We, little things can be spent by the board to take care of things. Major things have to be voted on at table. Anything, the ordinance have to be passed, resolutions, those have to be voted on.
All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor of.
The bills.
Approving, approving the financial report and the bills, please say aye.
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 Three ayes?
Yes.
I thought that's what you said last time.
She's gonna smack me, cause I didn't like her minutes.
Next up, the water report.
You got the water report Stacy?
No, it's up there.
Yeah, can you pass that paper? To your left, or is the dang the meetings?
Nope, there ain't yet.
You're probably looking for single, he probably getting lighted out for you. Need a reading.
Um, two point six at tower, one point five, either city hall. And it's just chlorine, right?
And then I did, um, prepare the letters for the surveys. And got those all mailed out, and, uh, says on the box out there to drop that back in the box. The water box of surveys, they go out every three years due to P A guidelines.
What happens to those after they come in?
Um, I believe we, we look at them and get an overall picture, Sanders does it, the people who do our water. They'll evaluate that, and if there's any one particular needing. The water looked at, then we can make an appointment to go do that.
Do we compile the information?
I believe Sanders compiles that.
So he'll get all of the surveys that come in?
Uh huh. She.
Okay.
So they can, any complaints about the water quality on here, that would be where the survey's gonna come in, and that's where the public should be submitting, right?
Yeah, like, you know, like the chlorine that they were unhappy with, that's gonna be on that survey, it should be. We should have some type of information about that.
I think it was one in the mailbox. That got mailed back, but you wanted them to go in with the water bills.
Oh yeah, yeah, they don't have to pay us down, they can go in the water box, and that what the sign says? We might need to verify that on the sign. I'll double check it before I leave this evening.
It says drop in the box, I think, but I don't remember what exactly it says.
Well, you know, we've got so much on that sign right now that it's. But it's, they're not to be mailed, that's not an expense they need.
Ready to go business? I believe, uh, this, uh, A R P A deal. Uh, where we got the grant for the covid money, is that right? Hello?
Actually, the USDA grant for city hall roof improvements, we're still trying to make a decision on that.
That's the, that's the A R P A deal?
Uh, there's one above that.
Above that.
The USDA grant, that's the city hall roof we've been working on for.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
So what I passed out is Dustin Closet, he sent this to the town email, he sent it to my email as well, so I could print it out for you guys. That's his estimate of everything, it's way below the twenty-five thousand, right, was it twenty-five or fifteen?
Um, twenty-five thousand.
So that's way below that, which is awesome, but he did wanna make note that the price of metal has gone up by fifteen percent. So we need to keep that in mind when we're doing this, and, um. If there's that much extra. If we could consider painting the building, that would be fantastic, it's kind of ugly.
Okay, um, I, I, I'm very happy that you were able to get ahold of him, he is the sidekick to, um. Brown, what's Brown's first name?
He used to be a partner with.
Like, and he.
Dan, Daniel?
Dan, uh, Dan.
I don't know, be something.
David, David, and David and him are actually the ones that wrote the first, uh, and, and you have a copy of it in your, your paperwork. Him and David went down to the park, they wrote up that appraisal and then brought it back and presented it to the, um, email, then we all have a copy of it. And so, when I saw the email today, I, um, I was hoping you printed this, cause I did not have the opportunity to do so. And I talked with him and asked him about the license.
And he's, it's in here.
Um, he's not a licensed roofer, but he works under a licensed roofer, so I called, um, Tim Swisher, well, Abby's not in, she's off this week, so I called Kim Swisher. And, um, she said that that should be okay, that we would need to go ahead and get that information as quick as we can. His license number, that he would be working under, and some type of statement from that gentleman. And I told Mr., um.
Dustin?
Yeah. How do you say his last name, Claus?
I've never said it.
Claus.
Claus? Claus? And, um, he said that wouldn't be any problem. He also, um, remembered all the estimates that he had given for the interior work, and felt like that. He would be pretty close to that again, again, maybe fifteen percent higher.
Just on the metal?
Uh, well, possibly on some of the other stuff too, that he was. And, um, but even then, their bid was well over the twenty-five thousand, I don't have it in front of me, but it was eighteen-nine or something. So even if he went a little higher, it'd still be within. Um, I'm still waiting on one more bid from, um.
Honest Dave?
Honest Dave, and also, uh. Daniel Graver Amish, not, not Graver metal, but Daniel Graver, who is a. Amish worker, he's done a lot of work in this area. And, um, I think he may be coming down Wednesday to look at the city hall and give us an estimate also. This Honest Abe, um, I, that's a good idea, and they do the interior work also. But I think the larger corporation we go with, the higher bill we're gonna see, cause like Graver, they're gonna try to give it to us. And we couldn't afford Graver, when we review that paperwork. And, um, so if we can small, stay small town, we might be a little bit better, and because, um, the assessment you got from Claus, I mean, he knows exactly.
Yes, he is good, he's very good.
So I'm, I'm real excited about that, I did check with him. We can either vote on it this evening, if you all feel that that's necessary, or we can table it. But, once we know, you know, we have a good idea, we've got all of them, and, um, can email them out. Then we can have a special meeting and get a vote done. And, and start waiting till next month. The sooner we can get on a list, the better, we've been trying to do this for two years.
I know, they just vote on it, but. If you wanna wait for the estimates, that's great, but how long is it gonna be after the estimates?
Right, and then, but then USDA gets it, and they wait, you know, and they may come back and say, we want, the architect wants to know this. He gave very detailed, and that's what we needed. And, um, but that's always a possibility, the architect is still gonna ask something more, and I do know that they're gonna need the license number from. And I do know that they're going to need the license number from whoever he works under. He does the job himself, but he's like working under a license number. And that guy is the one that's going to come out and say, yeah, he did it all right. It's on him. So.
So if there's other work to be done, like doors, that would come from another contractor?
Yes. Well, it could. It doesn't have to, but he.
It's not on here, so.
Right. He doesn't, he, he did not have time to get that prepared for us. But we pretty well know, this is just roof only. We pretty well know where he's headed with that because he did the first estimate. And he told me today that it would be very similar to his first estimate.
And he also agreed that he did what he did well back, so we don't have to find somebody else and he'll knock it out quickly?
I mean, I, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was like, you know, like six, seven hundred dollars for the doors and then it was like sixty tiles times five dollars tile, then times the, um, the work. And it was just real similar to his first one. But I was at work when I had took my break time and tried to respond to him and didn't have the paperwork in front of me, my copies. So we, even if we voted on this evening and said, yes, we wanted to go with him, until we have his other bid, USDA is not going to go any further with us.
So if I talk to him and we can get the rest of the bid by maybe next week, can we get a special meeting for that?
Yeah, I mean, if we can get as much information we can, any of us can call a special meeting and we can try to move on. So. So I, I say, I recommend that we go ahead and table it tonight. I'm very pleased that we've got this additional. It's very much like the first that we had from Mr. Brown, since he was involved with Mr. Brown. Um, moving in the right direction. But I think until we have the rest of it, we probably ought to table it.
And then we can vote on it at a special meeting, right? If it's tabled, it can be done at a special meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yes, it can. And that might be the best way to do it, is just to have a meeting specifically just for this, so that we can really get this done. And I know it's hard because, you know, trying to get this all together at the same time. I'm working longer shifts now, so it's a little bit harder on me, too, but. So. I vote to table.
You made a motion?
I made the motion to table the decision on the contractor for the USDA grant.
My second.
That will be on the agenda next, or we'll be calling a special meeting, one to two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Linda and seconded by Christina to table the letting of bid, or accepting a bid for the roof gutter, downspouts, et cetera. And until we get a second bid that is for the other work and call a special meeting to take care of all of that at that time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Say it.
Good job.
You can't vote.
I hate to, um, I hate to table it again because I am so worn out with it.
You can't vote.
Um, just the one page. And, um, so on the next, on the agenda, guys, is that Illinois, um.
ARPA.
So I looked into that and we can get bandwidth on that, like internet.
Supply to our.
That's what it said. I looked it up. I brought up two different sites because I couldn't read it.
Oh, you mean like through the village or, or here?
Like if somebody comes in and says they want to supply internet to us, it can be covered on that.
And the, um, the amount of this one is thirty-six thousand. And we've already received eighteen thousand installed on it. And if you guys, there's this, uh, it's telling us about a webinar. I received an email today about a webinar that's going to take place on the twenty-first. I will give that email to you all so that you can get either get, it's on a Monday. So I'm hoping that you can get in there and look and watch and participate. If you can't, they are going to run it the next day on Tuesday. So far, you had to be live on the webinar. They weren't opening it up so you could watch them later at your convenience. But this one on the twenty-first will be opened up for the twenty-second so that you can watch it, too. The deadline for giving them an idea of what, how we want to use these monies is April thirtieth, so we need to get on it. Um, so that's why, again, um, I, I said it and I'm just trying to get you as much as possible to get out there and look at it. Um, the final rule takes effect on April first. I told you April thirtieth, April first, guys.
I did, yeah.
April first is the final rule of the, how you can use your monies. The monies are there, but we just can't do anything with them until we tell them.
So what are we using that for?
That's why you were.
That's why you got to look at this.
What do you guys want to use it for? Like, do you guys have an idea of what you're wanting to use it for? Because it's water sewer.
I haven't had time to look.
I think the only things that it was covering based off what I was looking at is water sewer and it says something like increased bandwidth or something like that. It, bandwidth infrastructure is what it said on the website.
What I have looked at is the water would be a real key for us because we do have such trouble with vandalism of the water meters. And we can actually purchase locked meters and locked lids.
Who's vandalizing water meters?
Well, how do, how do a possum fall on a open meter?
Because you're looking open.
Because we have to lock, and if we can lock it, then that won't happen. So, but there's, there's other ways, too. I think we have a pump that may need a little something or another and so.
We need.
But that's, we really need to get on there and study and see where it can really go.
So if we have until the first, this month is March, so we're not going to be able to vote again until after the deadline?
We can always call a special meeting. Once people have more of an idea, we, I've been preaching this since I first learned about it. And so hopefully we'll get a little more active. We all were.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to get work done on them sewer ponds out there, on the valves. They're all messed up.
The valves. See, that, that will be with that, too, then. Yes. And so, Mayor, you probably need to get some prices for us on those valves. Prices on the, the meter lids, meter locks, so that we know what we're looking at and just what all we can use.
Is that something that's in that big catalog?
Yeah, it might be. Yep. And I think there's two or three of them I backed there. I don't know why they sent so many, but I'm like, okay, it didn't cost us. The next one is the possibility of signed committee volunteers to bring the water car. Topographical errors on previous meetings, agendas, and minutes.
Okay, it came to my attention as we were going through some past meeting minutes and agendas that the, uh, these were way before my time. And as we were assembling those to send out for a, uh, what's the request?
FOIA.
FOIA request, but they didn't always match. So we looked up the dates of the meetings. And rather than changing, for instance, on this agenda, making a new agenda, uh, we crossed out the wrong date, like this, like if this one, for instance, was wrong and it says March fourteenth, we'd cross out fourteen and put the correct date in there so that people would understand that it was a corrected, uh, agenda and not a new agenda, so that everything would go together. And there was, um, do you remember the other thing that was typo? And, and so that's the main thing that I wanted to point out to you, that, that there were some typos on that in the past. And we've done what we can to correct it rather than, uh, you know, when you do bookkeeping, you're not supposed to white out anything. You're supposed to make one line through it and put in the correction. So it looks like a correction has been made rather than trying to falsify the record. So that's been done.
And while we're talking on that minutes stuff, then, um, I want to point out that on the minutes that the reason why I personally did not feel that I wanted to approve the minutes this evening, um, I'd like Claudia to, to study more on what has to be written in the minutes. There are comments made that look like direct statements, and they are not correct. Um, people get confused about the monies. And so I want to clarify so that you all understand and the public that the, um, the grant that's going on over here, that's motor fuel retax rebuild grant money. That was passed last April, and this need to be very firm in your minutes. The resolution was passed last April by motor fuel tax to purchase that property, take down that house and put in a parking lot slash storage. Um, we've only spent a portion of that so far for the first part. We're waiting for weather to get better for the rest of the gravel to go in there. Hopefully it'll take the full eighteen thousand, but we are approved for that much of the motor fuel tax money to do that. And that, that money came in a special allotment by itself for a three-year period, every six months about three thousand thirty-one dollars. And it went into the motor fuel tax money account, but it has to be accounted for separately. And that's the way it has happened. Um, we had to say within the first year what we planned to do with that. We had multiple discussions about different things we could do, and that's what was decided. So that was the eighteen thousand there. There is, uh, another USDA grant that we're applying for, for the city hall roof repair. And that amount is twenty-five thousand that they will grant us. Now, if it doesn't cost that much, we don't get that much. If it costs more than that, we make up the difference from whoever we decide to do the job. Um, there is the American Rescue Plan. Well, no, let's go with the, the CURE plan, CURE program is the next one that have been introduced to us. And.
Say, say its name again.
CURE, C U R E. It has to do with COVID relief. And that started, um, for initially, it started in March of twenty to December of twenty. And then as COVID grew and did not go away, they increased that time through January of twenty-one through December of twenty-one. It needed to be COVID related, definitely COVID related. And Christina was on the treasurer at the time and.
Christina James.
Christina James. And we both had a little hesitation because it's like, well, we don't have someone in this office all the time working. So it's not like, you know, because we don't. And we bought one bottle of hand sanitizer. We had one meeting down at the shelter house because we needed more space. And so, um, just hesitant to how we really qualify. And I spoke with them more than once about this. And they said, well, you know, don't worry if you qualify or not, submit it and then we'll decide if you qualify or not. So I met the deadline and that amount was eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars, I believe. Claudia, if you would take the time to look that up exactly for your minutes. But I believe that is the amount. And of that amount, at the time, we only had maybe five, eight thousand dollars of the treasurer's and the town's city worker payroll is what was going to look like, was going to apply. Since then, I got the deadline in and then had revision so that I could find out definitely what they wanted. Because myself, I'm, I'm hunting and scourging, trying to find what information they need. Because they, I'll tell you one thing and then you're going to look up something more that they need. And so they had me submit payroll for any of the workers. The treasurer was not covered, but the city workers were. They were looking for city worker, water city workers or safety officers. So I gave them the definition of what the city worker does, any city worker that we've had during that timeframe and put those payrolls in, which was above the eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-two. So there's a good chance we're going to get that full amount. It, it hasn't been granted yet, but there's a good chance that that, that will follow three fours.
And that just goes back into our account?
Uh huh. And then, uh, then the, um, the Illinois Rescue Plan, as I said, that's thirty-six thousand. We've got, we've received one, one payroll so far of eighteen thousand that, um, can be spent after we decide where it goes. So. Last month meeting and all these minutes, all these numbers were being thrown around and they were, none of them were correct. So I wanted to be sure that that was plain today, that you guys know what those monies are and where they're being spent. If they get to be spent.
You want to make corrections on these so that they, so.
No, this is, this is someone's opinion about something. And, um, as we learn more how to write minutes, Claudia, you'll learn that, you know, just because someone says Fred, we don't have to write Fred. So, um, it's, it's fine with me, um, but I just, uh, but I mean, it was just really out of hand. We do work outside of the office. We do take copies of paperwork that has to stay in the office to be able to work on what we do. If we have something signed, we have to actually have it signed and taken to where it needs to go. If it needs to go to the auditor or whatever it needs to go to. So, um, those are some of the things I wanted to clarify. Speaking of auditors, um, remember we talked about the auditor tried to increase our amount of our audit in the middle of this audit? He hasn't got it completed yet. But we, um, I talked with him and said, you know, hey, you can't do the, or you shouldn't do this in the middle of things. So he compromised and said, okay, I won't let it go above this amount. Um, originally, he quoted us two thousand. He was trying to raise us up to two, to three thousand. And I'm like, no, we're already locked in with you. And so.
What are we talking about?
So, um, I'm talking about the audit. So the next audit will be starting, May first is when we'll be gathering. And unless we don't have a treasurer, it will be us gathering that information and taking it to the auditor again. Our current auditor is Mr. Wilcox. And what you basically do, you have a box of everything that goes to him. And, um, so if anyone has any reservations about Mr. Wilcox or is concerned, maybe I could write him and get a statement of what he plans to charge us if he continues with us. And then we'll bring that to the board and make a vote if we want to continue with him or not. But I wanted you to be aware.
I like John pretty good. He's, he's my accountant as well.
Who is it?
Mr. Wilcox.
Is it Greg?
Greg? Is it Greg?
Yes.
I call this place by his name.
I believe it's Greg.
The one up by Far Bureau?
Yes, uh huh, uh huh. And, and I do, too. He's easy to talk to. He's down to earth, um, easy to work with. He's new, new back in the business of doing audits. And that's why I think we are trying to, we absorb a little bit of his cost because it's costing more than what he initially thought it would. But hey, we made a deal, let's stick with it. So that's something you guys might want to keep in the back of your mind if we need to be thinking about looking for another auditor. Just throw that in there while we're talking about bills. Okay?
I'm done. All right, dumpster version.
I think I need to go to a closed session for a few minutes to get that, get that stuff straightened out about bills.
Okay, you can call closed session if you need to.
Need to.
Okay, so you need to.
This meeting is adjourned for.
Need to take a vote on it.
We need to make a motion to ask them to go into closed session.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
Will we come back to the old business?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's do it.
Okay. So give them a few minutes to gather this up because there's certain things have to be written down. Stacy, Christina, you said you first to go into closed session?
Sure.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
No, I'm aye.
I mean, we still got to, though, two over one thing. Um, so, um, regular meeting.
They can't do this.
Will be recessed to.
Resessed at seven forty.
That's new business. That's new business.
What was that? I couldn't hear you two when you talked back and forth to each other.
We're going to look and make sure that we're able to do this according to the book.
Yeah, the board can hire, but Gary can't. Let's stream emergencies.
He can appoint, we can't hire.
He can appoint.
He's the only one that can appoint.
Let's make extreme emergencies.
The board has to vote if he's hired.
To be clear, we're going to look up what we should be doing right now, not about anything, not about hiring or firing. We're simply looking up other things about closed session meetings.
Does that even require a closed session? Does that even require a closed session?
You can't discuss an employee in a
Open Meetings Act, you don't have to have a closed meeting, but you may have wages.
That's what you get to talk about.
You don't have to have a closed meeting about nothing, but you can
Is anybody on the top of their head know? I, I do know that we can go into closed session at any time if you're involved. Or if any of us call it.
You can also just put in the ordinance book.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
No, it's on the agenda.
They don't have
We going back to vote on this new town worker you just hired? You can't be doing that. Because you didn't have a
Why not?
Well, you better read your laws, that's why.
You didn't even vote on it.
You can't do it back there in the bag.
Okay, so what are we looking at? Reasons for closed session meetings? What not reasons that we can call one in the middle of a meeting? I'm pretty sure we can, but I just wanted to
Tell me something, Bill. I don't know jack shit.
We don't know that either.
Can't do it. You don't know jack shit, why are you the mayor?
I don't know either, so
Apparently not very self-aware.
So meetings type
It's in that book.
What is any committee meeting? Did you find it?
It's in that book.
Two twenty-four? I'm sure that, I'm, I'm pretty sure I have read that we can call one in the middle of a meeting like this, even though it's not on the agenda.
Still gotta have a meeting.
But I sure wanna, I want to be sure.
You can, and if he's appointed a temporary employee since the last meeting, you can go into closed session and discuss that, the hiring of that employee. You can't hire him back there. You gotta come out and do that in open meeting. But certainly go back there and discuss if it's on your agenda that he was hiring him.
But she's not on the
He ain't on the agenda.
They own the agenda.
That's what, what I'm looking at Peggy is if I can go into closed session when, when it's not on the agenda.
Can't add it.
Nope.
Peggy's right.
He can appoint any employee at any time.
Yes.
And if you guys say that you don't approve of his employee, he can keep that employee on until he, until he finds another employee to appoint.
And how you pay him if you don't vote on it?
It's, you can't. You can pay him for his hours.
Oh, where was the vote? On how much he's gonna pay?
If you guys wanna take your discussion outside
It's probably said in the ordinance, it'd probably be like a minimum wage. I'm really not for sure. I don't remember.
You cannot till you get together with a meeting, special meeting.
The boards have to pay.
That man can't get any money until you have a vote.
That is true.
And he's been working for a town for over a month. I bet a dollar he's been getting paid.
Best thing you can do is just Google Open Meetings Act of Illinois Closed Meetings. I'm gonna tell you right there. State law from the state website.
He can only hire and fire string emergencies only. String emergencies.
I do know that Damon's grandmother's not doing too well. So that's probably why Bill was appointed. So.
What does that have to do with it?
Yeah, his personal life, Bill, it has nothing to do with the public money.
It has nothing to do with it. It has nothing to do with it.
No, it has nothing to do with public money.
You really want to talk about it? You done the same way with Damon, the same as you done this one.
Yeah, I don't mean to make you wait, but I just wanna know that I can do, that you can do this.
I'm sure I do. De-Nut, the mayor, let him make you say it.
That's it. Excuse me, folks. Well, it's not the vulgarity, it's the fact that I'm hearing, you know, people just quote, 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 quote rules. It's like people that quote the Bible and don't live by it.
Well, these are laws. This ain't the Bible.
You know.
This is the laws.
I, I'm aware of laws.
Thanks for coming.
I'm at your meeting for meeting, man. I'm at your meeting for meeting.
You're just beautiful, boy.
Bye. Have a beautiful time.
Well, Mayor, I'm not finding it now, so let's move on.
They can't do it. No, they can't do it. I gotta go, but Call me later.
Okay, I'll, I'll call you.
That's why I wondered because it's not on the agenda.
If it's not on the agenda, Linda, you can't do it.
That's what I, that's what I was done. Okay.
Gary, you can call a special meeting to do that. Could be a special meeting.
You'll have to do, you'll have to call a special meeting at a different time because it's not on the agenda to do closed session.
That's no problem.
Okay.
It just says you have to have them give proper notes.
So now you're gonna overstep it and have a special meeting when you've already paid him, right?
So no closed at this time.
And yes, so when you write your minutes To temporarily
That's what you were saying.
He can't hire him temporarily. So she gotta have a meeting.
We reviewed the paperwork and it was not permissible at this time because it was not on the agenda. For our understanding. Okay, totes. Totes, totes, totes.
When the mayor appoints an employee and like, like I did a couple of different ones. You bring them in, you orientate them, take them out.
Are they on the list of employees? He gotta be on the list of employees.
No, you need to have a meeting for him. I mean, you can, but transparency and otherwise, you're supposed to have a meeting before you start paying him.
I don't mind.
Because it's not a major point.
Well, whenever, whenever you know there's an opening or you know I mean, you can have a meeting every time you turn around for everybody to think.
But the Open Meetings Act is not
We ran a little bit different law because of our ability to vendor five hundred people.
No, the Open, the Open Meetings Act is the same law.
Dumpster versus two totes being provided at the shelter house.
Which I need to put it in the paper if there's a job opening and then call closed meeting and hire.
So yeah, we were recessed and so we were briefly back in order. We'll call.
Christina Kristenberry.
Linda Johnson.
Here it is.
I don't think I spelled my name the same the whole time.
I, I know. I've done it three times. Um, at, um, what time is it?
Seven forty-eight.
Dumpster versus two totes being provided at the shelter house. We've had several residents asking about that, so.
It's already been switched out. Burtman, Burtman's gone and they got a new one up there.
And it's a new tote?
They got a new, they got a new dumpster up there.
Do we need a dumpster?
But, but the discussion
Sorry, the busy munches.
But the discussion is, is do we want totes opposed to a dumpster? Because we have outside people coming in and dumping in the dumpster. We've always had that problem, but that's what's being presented to the board, is removing the dumpster altogether and having just two totes up there. That's what's, that's what's being questioned to, to the board. We also passed out the notice that our dumpster bulk items pickup is coming up any time now that we need to go ahead and get that scheduled.
That we try to pick up?
Uh huh. Citywide cleanup.
I've seen that lady there.
Yeah. And, you know, if we want to make it at this time while they're coming or not coming, the citywide is when they, we put it out by our house anyway, so that's just a matter of us trying to figure out what day we want to do that. So we can, um, look at this note and then make the decision at the next meeting of what day we want that dumpster or for that large bulk pickup to be done. But the question is dumpster versus two totes being provided at the shelter house. And we need a vote yea or nay if we want to make a change.
So you said that
I make a motion that we keep the dumpster.
You can't make a motion.
So during the busy season, that's like summertime for parties and stuff?
Winter?
Winter?
Chris, my November, December are booked.
Like every weekend? And they're gonna use more than two big totes? Really?
Yep, they have Christmas parties up there. You got all your Christmas wrapped and you got all your TVs.
So two large totes wouldn't be enough during that time?
So would they be picking up those two large totes at the same time, like once a week, like hours? And two totes still wouldn't be enough for like once per week?
If you have Friday and Saturday and Sunday. And they're not gonna pick up till Tuesday or Wednesday?
Wednesday. That's a lot of stuff, though.
I've had people already ask me if they can dump junk in it. I said, call city hall.
What's the reason people can't dump junk in it? I'm not saying, I just wanna know the flat reason. Why can we not do that? If it's gonna be dumped anyway?
Because, did you see the mess that we had up there not too long ago?
Somebody lit it on fire?
No, with all the junk that they dropped in there?
That they couldn't get in the dumpster. They just set it on the outside of the dumpster. TVs and mattresses and things of that sort. So it's getting abused. Now myself, I, I like the notion of a dumpster, but it does get abused.
Are there people abusing it, like people that are going to listen whether we say yes or no, you can dump it in there?
So
It could be people outside of the town also.
I mean, unless we're, it could be, it could be anyone.
They used to have those dumpsters with locks. Do they not have them anymore?
Good idea.
Either that or what about the cameras?
Yeah.
Because that way if you can get a lock on it, then the day that they have a party, it'll be unlocked and then locked back upside even.
Okay, I can make a phone call tomorrow and ask, um, now, we have a contract that has a certain amount in it and see if they would give us grace and not charge us more for that at this time of the contract.
Hey.
Didn't we look at that?
She's got a question back here.
It was twenty-two or something.
What about the cameras? Roofs and loads. I don't give a damn. She had a question.
We, we have one camera
Oh wait, it's because it's
And it is not in use.
John Hardwick and Dave Hardwick. It's okay.
Just to repeat what Linda said, we have one camera and it's not in use.
Okay, then why can't they get a new one?
It's not a camera, it's a trail cam.
Yeah, it's a, it's a trail cam.
There's two trail cams, it should be.
Them cameras are not that expensive.
I still like to see them.
And, um.
Well, they probably have them on the mayor's property. I got an idea where they are.
I'm confused now about what, what the, have you voted yet on, on whether to have a dumpster or totes at the park at the shelter house?
So we need to make a motion to keep the, to keep the dumpsters and then put the locks on next week's, or next month's agenda, correct? So that we can buy the locks?
So basically what we would do
No, there won't be locks bought. You'll have to, they'll, they'll provide you with the dumpster that will lock and we have locks.
So what would really take place this evening is that we would table. We wouldn't make a vote at all. We would table. We would have someone call the, um, the company and say, can we get a locked dumpster put in place here?
Are we gonna switch it either way? Like, if we're gonna keep the dumpster anyway, we might as well vote on it to keep it.
Well, that's how everybody feels. I mean, we And then I can try to call and see if we can get a locked one.
Did you ever figure out what price would be for two?
Totes? I don't think it's additional because we're allowed some minutes.
It's in the contract.
We're already paying for the
We're already paying for it, right.
And the contract doesn't care whether you have a tote?
Or a dumpster, evidently.
I'm sorry, tote or dumpster?
It's, it's already contracted to what we have. And so if we took the dumpster out, I don't know if we'd get a refund for that amount that we weren't using it. But it would not be an additional charge for the dumpsters or for the totes because we have the totes. So do we want to make a motion to maintain the dumpster and not replace it with totes at this time?
I say
And then try to get a lock?
I say try to, I'm gonna table, I wanna table this and see if we can get a dumpster that will provide us with lids for lock.
I'll second for table. Wednesday.
And Wednesday?
Wednesday. No, Wednesday I'll have more
I tabled, Linda second.
Okay, and it's two.
Table the decision.
Looking to, okay, table the decision and you're looking to whether or not a locked dumpster or a locked tote?
Maybe a dumpster. Locked totes don't lock.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Three ayes.
I guess I already talked about that schedule and the clean spring day, guys on that new business, so. Discussion of public comment time limit. You wanna go there again?
I do. So what if we kind of changed our means of communication and invested in some kind of written communication where things can be put on a board and we're gonna cover this, that's gonna eliminate, I feel like, the yelling. We can still give them their five minutes to talk about each topic and if they have topics that they wanna bring up, they can come up here and write it up here. You know what I'm saying? A whiteboard, this is something that I want covered. And then it's there and we can check it off and we can take care of it instead of just them throwing it out here into the air. Looking at me like I'm crazy, you know what I'm saying?
No, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, if it is something specific that they're needing to speak about that they can get on the agenda and address it and then they can have their time limit to, to show us pictures, to bring a bowl to the table. What, you know, whatever they need to do. But as far as just everyone speaking about, you know, they don't like the color of my shoes. Five minutes is plenty of time to do that. But if there's a topic they need to discuss with us, it needs to go on the agenda. That's my thoughts on it and that's what I have read.
So how would they properly, uh, get that on the agenda? Would they call and leave a message here? Would they bring it to the attention of a trustee?
It has to, they can, they can ask a trustee to ask for it to be on the agenda. Or they can call city hall and say, you know, hey, my name is so-and-so, I'd like to be on the agenda at the next board meeting. And then, um, and the board meeting is, you know, that's decision is made this evening and the next one is, if it's not this, I can choose the other month.
So can we get that in writing and put up in clear clarification? If you want on the board for longer, if you wanna talk to the board for longer than five minutes, you need to do X, Y, and Z and it's readily available so that we can give that to them and say, hey, you can do this?
We can put a
Was that not in one of the past?
We can put the, a notice on the, um, on the board outside that explains the procedure that they can do. You know, other than, I mean, I don't even know if this is outside. We put this outside. And then we can put that anyone wanting to address the board more than the, uh, five minutes, um, please call this number and, um, put yourself on the agenda. Ask to be on the agenda.
Let's do that. Let's make it more readily available.
Okay. So do you have that? Claudia?
She wasn't
Put the number on it to call city hall.
Discussion of comment time limit is gonna be, um, um, informative information on the board, instructing the public how to get on the agenda for comments greater than five minutes. That sound good?
The core four out there, correct?
Uh huh, yes.
Mayor, are we gonna put a limit on that? I think that would be
Most people can get a presentation done within fifteen minutes.
We got a limit, then, to a particular, to like to one topic?
Well, and, and part of the thing we're gonna explain on that letter too is that if they have seven people who wanna talk about the one, one subject, they need one representative to talk on that subject. As many people can come in the doors they want, but if seven people are talking about the same thing, they need to assign one person. And that's how they would do it on the agenda. They would assign one person to be their representative. Even if they were all in here right now and all wanted to talk about my shoes, one person would be assigned to do it.
They can all talk about your shoes as they wanted to.
You see, any subject.
Sixteen people are here tonight to discuss the color of your shoes. And they all are of the same opinion that you should wear different shoes.
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
Now, that's one of us to talk about it or one of them to talk about?
One of them, to present to us.
I think we should put in that letter to be very specific, that you need to request an amount, an amount of time and kind of give a brief overview of what they want to talk about.
Now, we are short-staffed. So, um, is it something that you would like to study on and actually write the letter?
Okay. We can put that on the agenda for next week that I can approve it through you guys, right? Just have the, have it here, give to you guys.
I mean, it's a letter. It's not something that has to be voted on or decided on. It's just a, a letter that we're putting out.
Whatever, I'm wanting that. We should probably bring it to the, we should probably bring it to the board.
Okay, so you wanna do it on the next meeting? You wanna present your letter next meeting?
I think it'd be good if we talked about it, make sure all those information's on there.
All right, I understand. So I'm not gonna try to write that letter. I'm gonna let you take care of it completely, okay? All right. All right, if you, if you, um, wanna ask me where I can find some, to help you find stuff, I can help you. But, um, it's all yours.
Got it.
Got it, okay.
We need to move ahead, ladies.
Yes, sir.
New business.
Yeah, new business.
I believe you already discussed the top one.
Yep.
So is there a date? A date for the foot, spring cleanup date?
No, I think that we just said we all got the informative letter about it and that we would decide at the next meeting what day we want that to be. And it would be a part of our regular scheduled pickup. Usually we do it in May, but, um.
But it's on the agenda and we got this letter earlier, so is there any reason why it couldn't be decided now?
And the, and the letter is, it states, clearly states that they are trying to get everyone scheduled.
Yes.
So I think it needs to be voted on now. Uh, they want it done before April and May.
And it, it is on the agenda, so we can definitely do that. Um, so, uh.
See what May says. I like May. Um, so it'd be on a day of regular pickup, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they pick up trash on Mondays?
Wednesdays.
On Wednesdays?
Mm-hmm.
I thought everybody was Monday.
Wednesday.
I know we're here, send my trash out, my husband, I don't know what day it is. Um, so is it Wednesdays for sure or Mondays?
It's Wednesdays.
It's Wednesday. It's Wednesdays. So we have the fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth of May.
I'm up for the eleventh, it's in the middle of mine. Is that too soon for everybody?